Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, February 24th School Committee Meeting via Zoom to order. Tonight, we only have one item on our agenda, and that is an open discussion of the potential redistricting and consolidations. Really, the purpose of the meeting, the new meeting that we just added this evening, is to talk about the options that were moved forward by Sanborn now that we've had some time to absorb them and do some analysis and ask some questions. I'm hoping that we can again have an open discussion. I'm going to review just at a very high level, the six options and and also, you know, perhaps if it's the will of the committee to reduce those options, I'll limit the options if there are some options that we know that we don't, we may not necessarily want to move forward because we will be having a public hearing on Monday, the third at Town Hall at 6:30 to give the community an opportunity to be heard on the redistricting options. And I also do want to thank all of the people who have sent emails, texted, called, you know, with their concerns and their opinions about the redistricting and advocating for their schools and for their children. We really do appreciate all of that. So with that, at a very high level, I am just going to rattle through the six different options. And I also wanted to ask, I think Nora is going to be sharing it. We did ask Sanborn for an additional option. So we're going to cover that one as well this evening. So 1A is business as usual, do nothing. 1B, redistrict the entire town, both North and South, no school closures, and leave the Old South closed. 2A, close Ross and Highlands, open the Old South, redistrict the northern part of town. 2B, close Ross and Highlands, open the Old South, redistrict both the North and the South sides of town. 6A, close Ross and Liberty, open Old South and redistrict the north part of town. And then 6B is close Ross and Liberty, open the Old South and redistrict both the North and the South part of town. And then option number three, Nora, I'll ask you to to share this in a minute, is to close Highlands, open Old South, and potentially redistrict both North and South. So I don't know, Nora, if you could just quickly walk us through that option. The committee got this in their packet last Thursday, I believe. So hopefully you've had a chance to look through it.
Nora, you're on mute. Sorry, I was just getting the presentation set up.
Thank you.
So this is the option that we sent over, asked Sanborn to do as an additional request based on some of the feedback that you guys had given us. And you asked that we asked Sanborn to do a full redistrict of the northern side of town, some adjustment to the South. So Sarah, do you want to walk through?
Sure. So in this option, as Lisa said, we close Highlands and use Old South on the southern part of town. And on the north side of town, we do some redistricting on the northeast side of town. So this is the map for option three. You can see our current map on the left that we've been looking at in each of the scenarios. And so in option three, I'll start with the northeast side of town. We are redistricting for more students to move into the Ross School. So you can see on the western border of Ross, the component that we've been looking at called Flaherty 5 moves from Flaherty to Ross. And on the eastern border of Ross, the component that we've been looking at called Morrison 5 moves from Morrison to Ross. On the southern side of town, the Highlands School is moved in its entirety, staff and students into Old South, as well as three components from the Liberty District. So you can see the two larger components on the very western border of the Liberty District called Liberty 6 and Liberty 7. And also one component that's sort of in the center of town, a smaller Liberty component called Liberty 3. In this scenario, those three components are redistricted into Old South with Highlands.
Keep going or?
Yeah, so and then there's no change to Hollis and minimal change to the rest of Flaherty and Morrison. So in this option, the capacity numbers are as follows. So Flaherty capacity is reduced to 79%. Hollis capacity is pretty stable, is at 63%. Liberty's capacity is reduced to 77%. Morrison's capacity is 70%. Ross capacity increases to 81%. And the capacity at South Elementary School is 80%. But of note, this does make South Elementary School now the largest elementary school in the town with approximately 450 students. You can go to the next slide, Nora. So this, in this option, Sanborn also has designated some potential buffer zones, which could help us with the capacity numbers at Liberty and Old South. If, for example, we did not want Old South to be such a large elementary school in terms of absolute numbers. So the two components on the very western border of Liberty, so Liberty 6 and Liberty 7, and then also the two southern components of Highlands, Highlands 3 and Highlands 2 could potentially be designated as buffer zones, which is a concept that Sanborn introduced in their presentation, which are basically components that could go to one or the other of the schools based on what is needed for class sizes. For example, like if a class at Liberty is full, they would go to Old South or vice versa. And I think there's one more slide, Nora. And this is how this option is evaluated against our guiding principles rubric. So this is rated medium for financial sustainability, the facilities report consideration, and minimizing student change. And this is rated high for using Old South, maintaining separate special spaces in all buildings, and maintaining no elementary and middle split. So overall, for this option, the redistricting does ease some of the crowding that we're seeing at Liberty and on the south side of town in general, and creates excess capacity on the south side of town. And it maintains the excess capacity that we are seeing on the northeast side of town, but does redistrict so that we can see some more efficient class sizes on that side of town.
Do you want me to show something again or stop sharing?
Does anybody have any questions on option three?
Nora, is it one more slide?
No, that's the last one.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee on option three?
I have a question. Go ahead.
Do we have a sense for, you know, like what the impact will be in terms of the number of sections across K through four that we could, that we would maybe be able to lose while maintaining classroom sizes? I mean, like, what would be the impact in terms of financials for for this? I'm assuming it'd be relatively similar to just a straight redistricting plan, but do we have a sense for what the savings looks like with this plan compared to the others?
I think to interject, I think it'd be very similar to simply redistricting. We might be able to pick up a couple of extra sections. So where as previously, we had said, one to two sections for 0 to 150,000 savings. This could yield maybe two to four at max. So perhaps a little bit extra money, but it's not significant.
So two to 300 on the very high end?
On the high end, yes.
Does that include facilities or is it both operational and facilities? Mr. Lee?
That would be operational on the school side. You know, in terms of facilities, they were using 100,000 for the closure of a building. In this case, you can say Highlands. But it's a, it's kind of a swap. It's not really a closure. So it would be cost avoidance down the road, which I don't think they had monetized.
Thank you. Mr. Fogarty, do you have a question?
My question was essentially the same as Mr. Rolos. I guess I would just follow up. When we say that there's a potential savings of 200,000 to 300,000 with option three on operational costs, I guess, can you give like a level of certainty about that? Or is there any? Or when would we find, know for sure how much savings there would be?
I'd be, as we approach the beginning of next year, obviously, we contract the kids who are already within the system. We don't have a sense of kids who will move into town or transfer into town. I would, I would think the one to two positions would be somewhat confident about, but I wouldn't want to make promises beyond that till I saw the actual enrollment numbers.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions on option?
There's one more.
Rachel and I have our hands up.
Okay, I can't see you on the screen.
My quick question. So like in this instance, right? So like Liberty, and I know this changes, right? But like, so Liberty is at 50 kids in kindergarten, right, is the projection? Do we have like a guiding principle for like, so could we institute the buffer zones? Would we be instituting buffer zones now? So like, because that would equate to two sections of 25, where if we were to funnel some of those kids into South, we could kind of even it out to some smaller average class sizes in kindergarten. So that's generally the idea for those buffers is we'd be able to proactively move one or two kids just to kind of reduce that size to a more reasonable number?
Yeah, it's a version of the flexible boundary policy that we presently have. By moving a whole component, you you get a little more bang for your buck, if you will. So we can tweak class sizes slightly, but everybody who's in that component would actually move, right? So you'd have to take a look at exactly who's represented there before you made some good decisions.
Okay, I'll yield to Ms. Tuffy.
I had two small questions about the capacity page for option three. What does it mean, out of town Highlands students to South? Who are the out of town Highlands students? It's at the bottom of the student capacity, school capacity page.
And one would include Metco. Sarah, do you have better information than that?
Yes, so those are the students that live outside of Braintree, but that we transport into our school system for whatever reason. For example, if they are homeless or part of a DCF. So it's not a, it's not a big number of students, but those were included in the analysis.
Okay, and they would, they would all go to the, no matter where they were residing temporarily, they would all go to Old South?
If they had previously been in Highlands.
Okay. And what about the K through 1 through 3, what happened to grade four there?
So you broke up a little bit, Kathy. Could you repeat that, please?
So again, at the bottom of the page on capacity, it says links K to Flaherty, Ames K to 3, Abels 1 to 3 to Old South. What happened to grade four?
So those programs aren't by grade, they're by level. So it's, we have three levels for Ames and Abels, 1, 2, and 3. So that incorporates multi-grade students. So the fourth graders are included in that grouping.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Horak, did you have a question?
Yes, how am I coming through?
I can hear you. I can't see you, but I can hear you. Are you there, Dr. Horak? Go ahead. You're not audible if you're speaking. Did anybody else have any questions while we see if Dr. Horak can reconnect?
Sarah. Hi, I have to step away for a couple of moments here. I have dual meetings happening right now. I have to step into ways and means for council, and I will be back momentarily, but I just wanted to let you know when I step away.
Thank you.
I just had one more.
Go ahead, Mr. Rolos.
So the 63% for Hollis, is that including every, like, is that including? Because they have a couple, like, that's including all, like, the language-based programming and everything at Hollis, too. So is there any concern that we're a little low there? Or, you know, like, that's my only concern is that we'd almost be a little low in Hollis. But it's still, obviously, the 356 is a big number. I just wanted to make sure that was all encompassing. That that's the the total population there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a balance because that's the biggest building. So unfortunately, like, even though the numbers still wanted higher numbers, its its capacity is so big that its percentage is going to be smaller.
And would we ever think about, you know, doing a, thinking about buffer zones in the northern half, too? Had we like contemplated that? Or are we like so confident with the capacity that we wouldn't really worry about that in the northern half?
I think, you know, the concept of buffer zones is important as you move forward regardless. So that, you know, even if the numbers are perfect in the next couple of years, three to five years down the road, that might change. And having buffer zones allow you to pivot where you need to and be efficient still. So the concept of buffer zones in this scenario, I think, is important to maintain regardless, even if you don't utilize it in a given year.
Okay.
Can I interrupt one second, John, if you're still on? Can you send the panelist link to Rachel?
Yep.
Do you want her email address? Sorry, I'm telling the world her email address now.
I can find it.
Okay, it's her personal email address, though. Can somebody?
Do you want to send it to me in chat?
Yeah, I was just going to say, can someone send it to him in chat? Perfect. Okay, any other questions on? I know Rachel has got some questions.
I had, I had some questions while we're waiting for Rachel. So we've talked a lot about the MSBA clawback, and it's my understanding that Mayor Joyce is going to talk to the MSBA on Friday, perhaps, about that.
Yes.
I have, Mr. Fogarty mentioned the possibility of leasing the schools to a private school to to negate that clawback. However, I've heard contradictory information about whether leasing to a private school would would satisfy their requirement that it be used for educational purposes. I, because we're leasing it to them, you know, it might be different if it was an education collab, it was a collaborative rather than a business arrangement. I don't know, but I would like to, I would like to make sure that that's a possibility that if we decide to, you know, if we say we close Highlands, the addition to Highlands, the 1968 addition to Highlands is in fairly good shape. You know, if we lease that to a private school, would that negate that 600, 600,000 clawback? So I would, I would like, I would like more information on that before we make a, we we do a final vote.
Yeah, I think I would agree. I think the MSBA, that whole, all the information we need from the MSBA is definitely something that we all need to have answers on. I am actually attending that meeting. So I will make sure that that question is asked, Ms. Tuffy.
Okay, thank you.
And report back to the committee as a whole, the results of that meeting. Okay. Dr. Horak, you've rejoined. You had a question on option three?
Do, how's it coming through? Okay, how's this?
Good, very good. Can hear you fine.
Apologies. Wifi.
No worries.
Not to lose my wifi connection. I agree with, I did hear Justin and Joe ask about the cost savings per scenario, including the fiscal, fiscal year 26, building closure, potential building closure, and a reduction in staff cost savings for each fiscal year. And it's helpful to hear 200 to 300 savings for option three. And I don't know if I missed it, but I would like to see that for the other options on the, that we've been discussing. So this new option three doesn't appear to save much money. And that concerns me because I think it doesn't fulfill our anticipated about $640,000 gap that we discussed in our meeting on January 27th. So for me, I am concerned about that. And I also see that this option three leaves an excess capacity in the north and the south. And I remember Superintendent Lee telling us that there's a figure of about 80 to 95% optimal capacity for efficiency. And this option three generally doesn't fit that. And it seemed to me that administration felt that that was an important goal. I think that moving forward, so in thinking of all these scenarios, I am really concerned about the the cost avoidance in these buildings, right? We have a huge amount of deferred maintenance on our buildings. And their financial burden and continuing to maintain all of our buildings upwards of about $100 million of deferred maintenance that all of our buildings need and things like mechanical plumbing and electrical. And we need to continue to provide a safe learning environment where our students can get the most excellent education that they can. And we need to keep that buildings report in mind and when making our decisions. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to thank Mr. McGorty for giving us a tour of South and Highlands. He mentioned that the cost of to maintain buildings that are closed, I mean, there's a cost to maintaining foster, there's a cost to maintaining inadequate. And for Highlands, if it were to close that old furnace room with there's about $150,000 worth of work that needs to be done there, whether or not the school is open. And that, that is, that's the big risk for catastrophic failure at that school. So I would, again, I would like to know what the cost of maintaining the closed buildings would be for the town. We we the mayor's, the level services budget calls for a 4.3% increase, but the mayor's projection was only for 3.5%. So what, what is the discrepancy there? Are we not, that's 640,000 that Dr. Horak referred to? Are we going to have to cut programs? Make, again, if we don't address that? You know, we have heard from teachers at the high school and from students at the high school about crowded classrooms. The example of the bands not having a section for more advanced students and a section for, I mean, that, that's really, you know, it's, it's specific to band, but it's really telling that we lost that level of instruction for our music students. So I would, I would like more information about the cost of maintaining all these closed buildings. What, what, how would we address the difference between the 4.3 and the 3.5? And I, I, and of course, the MSBA questions are important to me.
Thank you. And Superintendent Lee, I don't know if you wanted to address any of that. I know, you know, we've discussed, we don't know what the impact would be if we ended up being at 3.5 versus the 4.3, if we couldn't through this process, come up with the 640 to fill that gap. I think at this point, we don't know what the impact would be. And I know that, you know, we've been working with the town to try to come up with some other, I'm sorry, that the mayor's not sitting there. We're trying to come up with some other ways to to bridge some of this gap from the town. There's been ongoing discussions, but nothing has been yeah, decided because we're very early in the budget season. So again, sorry. No, go ahead.
I would echo exactly what you said, that we know what the delta looks like at this moment in time. We don't know what it will look like as we go through the budget process. So, you know, at 4.3 versus 3.5, yeah, if we don't do something along the lines that we've been describing through this process, we may have to look at some other cuts in certain areas. But we're not there yet. I think it's premature to try to identify cuts if they're not going to exist. So it's all part of the process. It's all part of kind of the consideration for the committee as it goes through its evaluation of what these options represent. But obviously, the budget process is going to play out all the way through March and deep into April.
Any other questions on? And regarding your question, Ms. Tuffy, on the cost of maintaining these other buildings, I mean, we'd again have to reach out to facilities and you know, the finance director to get additional numbers.
Mr. McGorty had a good grasp on what it costs to, even though we're leasing inadequate, we still had to spend like $30,000 in repairs. So he, he knew that Highlands had to have that $150,000 repair done. So I think Mr. McGorty has a good grasp on that, and I would, I would just like that. And also, just as we are projecting more students from these new developments in town, we also, the town also is, is going to get money for permitting and, and costs and, and that hopefully will factor into the town budget. So.
Those are, would be one-time monies that we could use, but it wouldn't be recurring.
The permitting would and of course, they will, they will, year over year, provide tax money.
Sure, exactly. Yeah. Yeah, there are quite a few to that point. There's quite a few different developments, you know, happening across town. And then you also have the MBTA. I know that's probably quite a ways down the road, but MBTA Communities Act. And yeah, there are a number of other. My big concern, and I know I've said this repeatedly, is capacity. I know with option three, the capacity is not the, what is it, 80 to 95% ideal? I have concerns, obviously, new development will bring more kids in. I'm sure it's not going to be hundreds of kids, but it'll be definitely kids in particular neighborhoods. And I'm going to repeat this, and I know I've said this repeatedly. I've been on the committee for a while. Back in 2013, we opened inadequate as a kindergarten center because we were expanding our full day K program, didn't have enough room at the elementary schools. We were also had kids in the elementary schools that we were teaching them in converted closets and stages and hallways. So if you didn't have kids in the system, 10 or 12 and stages and hallways, so if you didn't have kids in the system ten or twelve years ago, you probably didn't experience this, and then in two thousand and fifteen, the school committee at that time voted to move the fifth grade up to the middle schools, um, when the middle schools, the new middle schools were done, so we alleviated the space issues that we had at the elementary schools by opening the kindergarten center and by moving the fifth grade up to middle school. Then last year, we voted to close the inadequate school kindergarten center, and, you know, through budget reasons, all good reasons, we didn't move the preschool and the kindergarteners to the Old South as we had voted to do so in, I think it was two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-four, so my concern is with these new developments, and even Kathy, you're going to love this, if and when we get the money for full-day K, where are we going to put those kids? I think we only have two hundred and eighty-nine kids right now in the kindergarten program, I'm not sure if those numbers are exact or not, but our second grade class is two hundred and sixty-something kids, so if we got thirty to sixty or seventy more kindergarten, full-day kindergarten kids, where are we putting them? I don't like the idea of moving kids from one homeschool to another homeschool for just kindergarten, because we don't have classroom space in a particular school, so my biggest concern in all of this is capacity, 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 if we close Ross, what does that do to the North Side? Flaherty will now be ninety-four and ninety-six percent full. You know, that ZOM project, I, I believe the estimates are, you know, thirty kids or whatever potentially can move into that when it's fully leased, um, but that's, that's Flaherty, so I'm really concerned with closing Ross, um, for many reasons, but capacity being my main concern, and on the South Side, I think we have to open Old South because Liberty is full, Liberty is ninety-nine percent full, and even some grade levels are full, so we need, and Highlands is eighty-nine percent full, we need to alleviate the space issues on the South Side of town, and I think the way to do that is to open Old South, um, and, you know, Highlands has got, you know, it's the second on the list of the most needs, um, from the facilities department, so, um, again, I think we need to do something on the South Side as well, so I, I think, back to the, all the options, I think, and I'm, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I think one A, business as usual, is not an option. Um, I think we need to do something, um, again, I open it up to a discussion, I mean, that's basically where I stand at this point, we need, absolutely, we need to save money, absolutely, we need to look at the budget and, and, uh, you know, that's not lost on me either, but if we can bridge, you know, if we, if we took option three, because that's where I'm leaning at this moment, if we took option three and found some savings, whether it's a couple hundred thousand, two, three hundred thousand, um, and could reduce, you know, some work on Highlands for the time being, and then potentially figure out, you know, to, to Ms. Tuffy's question, you know, could we lease it out to a private school, could we use it, that's an MSBA question, so there's still, there's still information that we need for all of us to make, um, a final decision, but back to the original purpose of this meeting is, are there any options that we're leaning towards, any options that we know that we don't even want to consider, um, moving forward? And I just leave it open to people to, to discuss, Ms. Tuffy?
I think, I think we could, uh, uh, eliminate option six, um, the capacity at, um, Flaherty was ninety-six percent, um, under option six and six B, um, and, uh, South Elementary was only seventy-four percent, um, I think, I, I think that you're closing, um, it's, it's similar under six A, so I think, I think six A and six B are, are not viable and, and we should eliminate those options, I also agree that, um, uh, biz, keeping business as usual, one A isn't an option, uh, so I, I am looking at, um, and, and from the emails that I've received, one B, just to redistrict, um, two B, um, which closes Highlands and Ross, and three are, I think are the most valid, um, options to, to consider. Uh, uh, I agree with, uh, uh, Ms. Fish Keager, I, my preference is option three, but we don't know about MSBA clawback, we don't know about, um, what are, if, if we're going to be cutting more programs in the F, I, I would, wouldn't want to cut more programs, so those are, those are things that I would need to consider before I make a final decision.
So you said one B, two B, and three?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that would narrow it down to three options, those, those seem like the ones that, uh, two B is, um, has, uh, contiguous dis- districts on the South Side. Or we could, or we could keep both option two A and two B and just have four. Just to narrow it down, I, 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 I don't, I don't think six is a viable option.
Is there any other discussion on?
Through the chair?
Dr. Horak, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, um, I toured, uh, Highlands and, um, spent two hours with Mike McGordy, and, um, also toured Old South, and Old South is a fabulous building, and I think that the students that go there are going to be very happy, um, and, um, I think that, um, the, the building of the Highlands needs so much work that I think that it's wise at this point to have an exit plan, that's my personal opinion. Um, I, looking at option six A, six B, um, I agree with Ms. Tuffy that, um, moving Liberty into the Old South is, um, not as good option as moving Highlands in its entirety a- as a community, moving all of Highlands into Old South, so I would be in favor of not considering six A and six B further, and I also agree with Ms. Tuffy with not moving forward option one A and, and not moving option one B forward, because, um, my concern, I have multiple concerns there, but one A and one B just, um, don't get us the financial stability that we need and don't consider our aging buildings, I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Can I, uh, say something?
Sure, Mr. Rowell.
Um, I would, I would tend to agree that the, the, the option six doesn't make, um, a ton of sense to me, um, if we're talking about option two B, I, you know, I think kind of instituting those buffer zones in the, in a couple of those Liberty districts that were referenced in option three, I actually kind of like the idea that we can shift kids around in there for, for class size equity, um, I think we're all talking about financial savings as the driver of this, but the classroom size equity is a huge piece, I mean, when you have, uh, classroom size of thirteen in one part of town and twenty-five in another, that is a, uh, a vastly different experience in that classroom for those children, um, so I think that has to be a, a, a very close secondary driver, so I think anything that we can get that allows us to level these classroom sizes across the district is, is super important, so I think some flexibility with buffer zones would be nice to see in two B, um, one B, I think, the just town-wide redistricting could be something we could leave on the table for now, I don't necessarily know if we have to, um, to throw that completely out, but I, I would lean towards two B if we have some flexible boundary buffer zones and three being the, the two that make the most sense to me, that I would, you know, want to probably move on to a, a lengthier discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rowell. Mr. Fogarty, did you want to?
Sure, I just want to go over my, uh, positions on these, so at this point, I, uh, I, uh, lean towards option three and then secondary one B, uh, I, I don't support options two or six, um, so, to go over some of the reasons, uh, I do think that redistricting makes sense in terms to, in order to, um, balance class sizes, uh, there's a potential reduction in operating expenses with option three, uh, that Mr. Lee mentioned earlier, a few hundred thousand, uh, some of the, and I want to focus first on why I support option three by focusing first on the southern part of town and talk about the northern part of town, so currently in the southern part of town, Liberty is at ninety-eight percent capacity and Highlands is, is at eighty-nine percent, it does seem like there's a risk of overcrowding, uh, similar to other school committee members, I also, um, toured Old South and Highlands last week with Mr. McGordy, and, uh, you know, um, Highlands is ranked nine out of eleven on the facilities department report that Mr. McGordy put together, it's built in nineteen thir- in nineteen thirty, uh, this asbestos in, in the floors, uh, the steam piping needs constant monitoring and repair, it's expensive to maintain, many of the parts of the older building cannot be renovated without signi- serious expense, uh, because of, uh, the abatement needs, there's a constant risk of catastrophic failure that could be very expensive to address, uh, it seems like the, the Highland School is at the end of the useful life, its useful life, uh, I also toured Old South, which is ranked three out of eleven in the facilities report, it was recently renovated, it's been abated, the floor, asbestos has been abated in the floors, uh, it's move-in ready, the capacity of Old South is five sixty-four compared to Highlands' capacity of three ninety-eight students, so, uh, it leaves more room, uh, in the, in the southern part of town for expansion, and if you redistrict the southern part of town like in option three, you would end up with Liberty being at seventy-seven percent instead of ninety-eight percent, and Old South would be at eighty percent, so there's room for growth and you don't have that overcrowding issue, um, and I also think that, you know, the distance between Highlands and Old South, it's like a three-minute drive, uh, it's seems somewhat reasonable, uh, there's still going to be two, would still be two elementary schools in the southern side of town, and, um, I, I think there would be, even if we don't have an exact number, it would be less expensive to maintain Highlands if it's not being operated as a school, there is some kind of catastrophic failure, you wouldn't have to immediately repair the building in, uh, uh, which, again, if, it could be extremely expensive because of all the abatement that has to be done, as far as the, the northern part of town, um, I, I think that redistricting in the north makes sense, you could redistrict and have all the school, northern schools, uh, below eighty-two percent, um, I don't sup- I do not support closing Ross, uh, a couple of reasons for that, one, if you close Ross, then there's, there's the issue with, with, uh, potential, um, overcrowding in the future, and I, I want to point out, so Hall- I talked a little about Highlands, which is ranked nine out of eleven, Hollis is ranked eleven out, it's built in nineteen twelve, it has similar issues to Highlands, it's probably also at the end of its useful life, it, I'm not suggesting that there's a viable option to close Hollis right now, but if you close Ross, you're essentially heavily relying on Highlands, I mean, as, on Hollis, sorry, if you close Ross, you're relying on Hollis to, to sort of be there in the future and to, to, uh, have all the, the, the capacity to make sure that you have enough space for the students, but Hollis is also at the end of its useful life, it's not, there could be a catastrophic failure there that, that it would be very expensive to repair, um, I don't know what, at this time, what the long-term plan would be to address that, if it would be building a new building for Hollis, or, or, but, but, or building extensions on the other buildings, but it's not, to close Ross, you're reducing the capacity in the northern schools by their two hundred and ninety seats, and then you're, you're basically relying on Hollis, uh, to fill, to, to, uh, to fill that gap, and again, it's, it's at the end of its useful life, and one thing I got about, about, I, I, uh, took away from meeting with Mr. McGordy and, and touring Highlands and studying the report that he prepared, is that, you know, his report is very, uh, very factual, and it's very, um, some of the most factual information we have, like when he says that Highlands, you know, is, is ranked very low, there's really good reasons for that, um, and similar with Hollis, and again, it's not, it's just talking about the, the facility, the stand, the, the actual building, um, you know, if we, if we were to close Ross, it puts, uh, like, uh, Ms. Fish Keager said, it puts Flaherty at ninety-four percent and Hollis at eighty-six percent, there's a risk of overcrowding in the future, the trend in the town has developed, developed apartment buildings, it's going to bring in new families, uh, it's not just the families that are living at the apartment building, but I think it also will, you know, have some impact on bringing in young families who first live in an apartment and then settle down in the town, uh, and it, I just don't think it makes sense to dismantle part of the school system and significantly reduce the capacity at this time, uh, we should have room to grow, uh, and Ross is in relatively good condition, it's six out of eleven in the facilities report, it has land behind it that could be used to build on in the future, and also, uh, some of the other issues of closing Ross, of course, it's a title-one school, there's a significant low-income population, high rate of diversity, a lot of, uh, individuals who, um, are new to the United States, don't speak a lot of English, uh, particularly in certain sections of the skyline, drive apartments, I think that, to me, it makes sense to have a neighborhood school that i- is servicing that section of the town considering those, uh, demographic issues, you know, having a neighborhood school can provide all kinds of benefits in terms of allowing parents to participate and, uh, get, get to the school and, and so forth, um. Uh, I also, you know, I, I attended last week, uh, a meeting of the East Braintree Community Action Coalition, many people in that meeting were concerned about, um, if Ross were closed, like how it would impact the commercial development in East Braintree, like on Quincy Ave, which is apparently recently experienced sort of a, someone of a comeback, and I, I think some of the concerns were valid, I don't think we really have a complete understanding on how closing that school would impact that section of the town, it's the only school in that section of the town, which, again, has histor- the northeast section of the town has historically, uh, had a, had a lot of, um, uh, i- 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 you know, it's not, it's not highly developed in terms of commercially and, and so forth, and, uh, the, it's not just about, I, I understand, like, of course, we represent the whole town, but what happens in one neighborhood impacts the town as a whole, you have to think about revenue and, uh, tax revenue and, and development and things like that, uh, yeah, I mean, the, the financial impact, um, while we don't fully know what the impact would be in terms of programming, I don't think that, so if you close Ross, the, the estimated savings on the school side of the budget would be about four hundred thousand, that's, uh, from eliminating a principal position and several other positions, the hundred thousand on the town side is estimated, uh, because the town runs the facilities department, and of course, that's offset by the cost of hiring new bus drivers, but which I, I don't have an exact number on, maybe about fifty thousand, uh, then you'd have subsidies for low-income bus riders, so the total savings, it seems to be similar to what you would save with option three, if you're saving two hundred to three hundred thousand, to the extent there is a difference, it doesn't, is not significant enough to, to me to worry, closing one of the, uh, reducing one of the number of schools in the north, uh, and, um, you know, the deficit of six hundred and fifty thousand, I know, Ms. Fish Keager said that the town is working on ways to bridge that deficit, it seems like, that, that's one percent of the school budget, it seems like that, that there's got to be ways to bridge that deficit without, uh, closing an entire elementary school, um, you know, that, there's different areas in the, in the projected school budget that perhaps there could be reductions, like with tran- transportation or spent, special ed increases, um, and, uh, again, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's enough of a deficit to, uh, to close a school, um, then of course, you know, I, I did say that with option three, we'd be closing the Highland School, we still have two elementary schools on the southern side of town, it's just, you'd have, it wouldn't be the Highland School, it'd be replaced by the Old South, uh, and, um, yeah, those, that kind of summarizes my, my reasons for supporting option three, if option three were not the will of the committee, I, I think one B is the next best sensible choice, because you at least redistrict, but, but I'm not, uh, in favor of options, any of the options two or six at this time.
Can I make one more point quickly, or?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rowell.
So this was brought up, I think, February tenth, eh?
I think by Mr. Fogarty about something else, but. What I would like to see, I think if we are, if we're going to explore. Two B or two A. Would be to engage a commercial broker, just to give us, give us like a, a broker price opinion on what we could rent. Ross for if Ross did close, right? Because. If that were to bring in. Another couple hundred thousand annually, right? That gets added to the operational side of the town side, but but we're kind of like. More money coming into the pie. So. I think before we make a definitive decision on. Two or three or, you know, however, whatever the final options are, I think if we're going to be closing. Or or moving schools and leaving a building empty. Understanding what the potential upside would be on an operational side from the town in terms of like a potential rental income that comes into the town. Would be good to know because that could help to kind of uh offset some of the um financial difficulties we're experiencing, so.
And and we would, I I would suggest um. That be applied to Colbert. Because it doesn't really make sense to keep Colbert openness and administration bill, building uh. There, there'd be room at. In South and and the section where the art uh rooms and the computer lab. Where uh Mr. McGordy said this. Square footage there is larger than Colbert. Um, so. Uh, I would think that uh Colbert could be closed. And that building uh. Might be more commercially viable because of its location. I know that Seventy-Four Pond, there's a, there's a plan. To renovate and build uh apartments. And veterans housing there is, I don't know if that's moving forward or if it's. Still stuck in the. Planning stages, but we need. If, if uh. Could we put the launch students in Hollis? Um. Those are all questions I would like answers to. Uh, plus uh. Under. Under these options, um, are, is Ro, will Ross? If it stays open. And we redistrict the north, will it still be a Title I school? Uh, will Flaherty be a Title I school? Um, I don't know what the cutoff is for low-income students for Title I, but uh that. Don't wanna. Lose that additional. Support for our. Low-income students.
Do you want me to answer that?
Please.
Um, so Title I is based on students, not schools, so um the money, the money will not change whether or not Ross or our Title I school is. Is closed. It follows the students. So um, in our case, the two schools that have over thirty-five percent. Um, low-income thresholds are Ross and Morrison currently. Um, we do, Kathy, to your point, have schools that are are sort of close behind. Um, sometimes Hollis, sometimes Flaherty. East is right there also. So. Um, if, for example, next year, East were to go above thirty-five, we'd be redistributing funding anyway um across three schools instead of just Ross and Morrison. So every year it it may shift. Um, and it and it's based entirely on population.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Any other questions or comments from anybody?
I I just would say that uh it seems to make sense to me to to move the administration. Uh, to to relocate the administration out of the Colbert Building. I I don't know what the administration thinks about that, but. It just seems to me that. It's probably not, it just can't be necessary to have like an entire building for the school administration, just to, I mean, considering the fact that. All of the school's records are digital, so it's not like there's files or filing cabinets. It seems like there's got to be a way to move the central office administration to another location and free up the Colbert Building. For some other use.
Certainly, the administration is amenable to moving. It is really about identifying an appropriate place to go. Um, you know, many of our records are digital, but we have. Immense numbers of filing cabinets that go back decades and decades and decades. So it's, it's not as clean-cut, but certainly the administration can move once we identify the appropriate place.
And that, that's been an ongoing discussion too. You know, moving the administrative building, so. I think we need to continue to to look into options for that. All right, so. I don't know if anybody else has anything else. I just wanted to summarize where we are with the options, which I think we are, and you can correct me. So it sounds like. One B has support. Two B has support and option three has support. So we will definitely rule out, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, we will rule out option one A, which is business as usual, do nothing. We will rule out both six A and six B. Closing Ross and Liberty. And redistricting. Those two options are are, will no longer be considered. So again, one B, two B and three. Has some level of support at this point, you know, obviously pending the questions that we have and more details that we need. Is, is that a true statement?
I would be, I I think, I I thought I heard Ms. Horak kind of say this too, but like. So two B. With some tweaks, I I think if we're gonna be moving that Highland School, I I think that district moves together to that school um. Would be my preference. So. Two B didn't have that necessarily because I think you had, you had shifted two Highlands and two Liberty. You had kind of, kind of flipped them. So. You know, an amalgam of two A and two B, I think something that we maybe shift a couple of those components, but Highlands kind of moves together to Old South. Would be what I would be um. In favor of in terms of the option twos.
So right now, option two A is close Ross. And Highlands and open Old South and redistrict the north. And then two B is close Ross and Highlands, open the Old South and redistrict both the north and the south. So, can you clarify that to me again, what?
So it would be really moving Highlands together as a district, which was two A, but we would be moving some of that, some of those Liberty components into Old South, so. Highlands moves together, you're probably looking at Liberty six and seven getting moved over. Um. You know, you're kind of doing what the option three is on the south side. Because you're, you're trying to reduce that capacity at Liberty because option two A. You're still sitting at ninety-seven percent for Liberty, which is kind of, it's just too high. You're not getting any real bang for your buck in terms of the actual um capacity, so. I really think the south side would probably look a lot like option three. Um, and then up in the north side, you would be. You would be doing what two B is, so you know, you'd be doing the the closing Ross and then redistributing amongst Flaherty and Hollis.
Any other discussion on that?
I would just like, if I could just take a moment to look at the slides because I, not, I just want to see if I understand what Mr. Rolo was saying.
So for two B, is Highlands moving to s- to Old South? Together?
Uh, well, two B, you're losing the, so there's two Highlands components in the. The, the corner, so the uh right-hand like south corner, so you have Highlands two and Highlands three. We're getting, we're getting redistricted back to Liberty. I I. I think you would probably keep those two components at Highlands, um, which would, would have a, you know, double-sided benefit in my opinion because you. Are increasing that south capacity and you're decreasing Liberty capacity even more.
So is it two B we should be looking at then, Mr. Rolo?
Yeah, I mean, if you take two B. And then the the two Highlands districts that are, that are slashed in that, in that bottom corner. You know, those, those go to Old South with the rest of Highlands, right? So that. You're keeping Highlands whole and you're moving those three Liberty components and, you know, as as long as you're not bringing. That self-elementary capacity, you know, well into the high nineties or well into the nineties at all. Um, so long as that's going from seventy percent to. To, you know, in the low eighties, I think that you're getting kind of a double-edged benefit there because you're reducing Liberty capacity quite a bit too.
Okay, so. You're tweaking. Um, option two B.
Yeah, I mean, that would be what I would, what I would. Be supporting in in terms of the option twos.
Okay. So this is two B, right?
Yes, so two B with with those tweaks, I would be, it is effectively. It is option three in the southern district, basically.
It's the same as two A with the, with the uh Liberty uh. The, the three units of Liberty going into um. Old South. So it's the same, it it is. He's, he's asking us to uh use option three for the southern side of town.
Right, so also talking about Highlands two and three. So Highlands two and three in this map for two B goes into Liberty, but Justin, I think what you're saying is keep them at Highlands.
Correct. Right, so we are, we are using the southern, we're using the option three south side.
Look at two A, Nora. Put two A up.
Please.
Thank you. So if you look at um two A, you see the um. Three sections of Liberty. That were moved into Old South. In option three, and that's, that's what you're asking for, right, Justin?
Correct, because in option two A, I mean, Liberty's at ninety-seven percent. If we're gonna go through this whole thing. It makes zero sense to me to to leave. The capacity at Liberty at at ninety-seven percent. So at least that gets us a lot of excess capacity in both of those schools in the south. So it is, it is what option three is on the southern side. It is exactly what option three is on the southern side. And then we're, we're, we're doing a consolidation in the north. I mean, that would be. The option two that would check enough boxes for me to to at least make it worthwhile um for consideration.
So do we want to call this two C?
Sure.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, so again, to reiterate. Option one B. Two C now. With the suggestion that Mr. Rolo made and three. So of the seven options that we started with, we're gonna, we're drilling down to these three for consideration to move forward.
Do we want to vote yay or nay on and knock out the ones that were like to move these forward or how do we want to do this from like a? You know, are we doing this as a group or are we? Saying like option one A and and basically voting to to knock that out of consideration?
I think the whole point, I mean, we can certainly vote if people want to vote, but I thought the whole point of the meeting was just to figure out which ones we wanted to actually move forward. Um, because we weren't really gonna take a vote this evening, but if people want to vote to remove what we're removing, we can certainly do that. Mr. Fogarty?
Just a point of order. I'm not sure that, like, under Robert's rules, that you can vote to not do something. That you can make a vote to not, I mean, maybe kind of a technicality, but I. I mean, I don't know that we can.
Then we can vote to. Sorry. We vote to move the positive, to move the three positive forward and and to exclude the others, I mean.
I don't know. I think we've all made our positions pretty clear. I don't think that, so I I don't know that a vote is necessary. I think it's.
Right. I did, I, I was saying the same. I didn't think we needed a vote necessary. I thought that the purposes of this meeting was to figure out where everybody stood. And to determine which ones we want to move forward. The point being for me is we're gonna have. A public hearing on March third. And if we're removing some of these options that potentially don't impact a certain school or a certain group of, you know, a neighborhood. You know, there's no need for them to come forward and say, please don't close our school or please don't move my neighborhood. So if we're removing some of these options. I I guess I want the people who. Have a stake in this because there's gonna, there are a lot of people in in any one of these three options that we've drilled down to. There are a lot of people that are um. You know, are gonna be affected by this. And again, I've, I've said this at every meeting, this is not lost on any of us. Um, the impact to to families and students um redistricting. So um, I just want to to know if we can. Again, drill it down to a few, and then when people come on the, on the third, they'll know what's, what's truly being considered by this committee.
Lisa, if I could.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to add, you know, I think as, as we're talking tonight about possibly, you know, further exploring some options over other options. Um, I think for the meeting, the next meeting, um, it would be beneficial to see the options that were sort of talked about moving forward tonight with um. Maybe the cost savings analysis with them for the committee's perspective. We are meeting with the MSBA this week to try to get some clarification on potential paybacks, timelines, that sort of thing, so we can hopefully have that prepared and ready for the committee to review. Um, you know, I think throughout this process, um, what we've been trying to sort of shed light on is just. Lining up like our, you know, operational school costs with the capital needs of buildings and what does that mean for our community moving forward? I love the neighborhood schools. Um, I've gotten so many messages about the neighborhood schools. So many people have grown up in Braintree and attended these neighborhood schools. They're beloved and I. You know, I think what we're trying to do is hold on to that as much as we can. I think when you think about education. Now, how, you know, we don't educate us, we don't educate a classroom of thirty students the same way we did forty years ago. These buildings were built for a different style of education. We've modified over them over the years. We've built in specialists. We have pull-out groups, little pull-out classrooms, all built into these schools. But. When you think about. Really wanting your child to be able to go to a school and get an individualized education with their peers. There is a benefit to consolidation and I think hopefully. You know, if not now, it's a conversation that recognizes that and strategizes about how we, what we want to do with our elementary schools in the years ahead, and I. Hope to be able to add more, you know, information on the facility side. You know, we started to put together more numbers so we could strategize and plan. Um, and I think too, the committee just should keep in mind that like. You know, we're considering a lot of things. Um, you know, if it ends up being broken out into phases. Um, that happen over, you know, a series of years. I I think those are options we can consider as well, but again. There is gonna be a monetary component that, like, when we get into budget season, I don't know if we'll go back and say, like, oh, we should have done this consolidation to free up funds for this, so. We just have a lot of moving pieces now, but I think. This conversation, if anything, has really highlighted a lot of the committee and the public's, you know, perspectives on what we really want to hold on to as a district. Um, so I think, you know, some of the options were considered if we can layer some of the financial impact and maybe also some of the service impact so for our students' learning. You know, because, because it's all connected, so I just, you know, wanted to sort of note that we're gonna be adding some information um into, you know, to expand upon this before the public meeting next week, so. Um, just wanted to, to add that, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, is there any other discussion from anyone else?
One more.
Mr. Rolo?
I mean, I I know we had mentioned one B and I had kind of mentioned it, but like, looking back, I mean, really, three is. Is, I, I actually, in terms of. The two options I would drill down to would be like that two C kind of, you know, the, and three. You know, I don't know if anybody feels strongly about one, one B. I mean, effectively, three is very similar to that, but we're just moving Highlands as a group to Old South. Um. So I I really think that we should be drilling down into those two, which would be. You know, the two, which is slightly more drastic, and then the three, which seems to be a little bit of a, of a compromise. I I had said one B was an option that I was considering. That. Three is definitely like the priority if we're only. If we're just doing like one move for Highlands. So for me, it's really into like the two C and three. That's kind of what I wanted to say.
Okay. I think we should leave one B in there and just to the Ms. Point, um, if this is a phased approach, and I'd also like to see the financials uh side by side. Again, I think, you know, we need to do more than just redistrict um the entire town, but I would like to see those numbers. If anybody else has any input on that. I don't see any. Okay. So again, we'll, we'll create a two C. We have option three and option one B. So those are the three that. We have support, some support, some, again, need the financials, need to. Um, answer us a few questions. MSBA will come with that meeting on Friday. answer us a few questions. MSBA will come with that meeting on Friday will be key. And anything else that Mayor Joyce of the town can provide as far as financials. And also, Mr. Lee, if there's anything else additionally you can do based on these three particular options. So again, the, the next meeting is on March third at Town Hall at six-thirty. And again, it's a public hearing. We probably will have a few things on the agenda prior to opening up for the public hearing, but I will, you know, we'll put that agenda together as soon as possible and, and share it with the committee. Is there anything else we need to discuss in open meeting before we move to executive? I don't see any. Okay. All right, then, at this point, I'm gonna, we're gonna move to executive session. I'll ask for a motion to, to close the open meeting. We will not be returning to open meeting. And I'll have to do a roll call, because we're on Zoom. I'll have to do a roll call anyway to close the open, and then we'll move into executive session. So we need to go into an exec, executive session for consideration to enter into an executive session pursuant to chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy for the negotiations of a non-union personnel services contract as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by myself, the chair. So May, I have a motion to move into, excuse me, to adjourn the open meeting. Yep. The motion?
Second.
The motion, did I hear Dr. Herick? Sorry.
Yep.
Motion by Dr. Herick, and a second by Ms. Tuffy, so I have to do a roll call. Mr. Fogarty?
Aye.
Mr. Rolo?
Aye.
Mayor Joyce?
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Dr. Horak?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we are now in executive session. Thank you all.
Thank you.